Thank you all for coming out on this balmy November night. I really appreciate it. One thing I believe in is keeping meetings nice and efficient. We're going to have a hard stop in one hour, so we have a lot to get through and we'll make sure to get you out of here on time. Now, I know when we start to talk about this stuff, we could all sit here for hours and hours and hours, so I appreciate your understanding about being prompt. So, we're going to do some quick introductions and I'm going to tell you a little bit about farming here in Will County and we're going to talk about the infrastructure needs for our agriculture here in Will County. We're going to talk about that big thing that we always want to talk about, but we're going to talk about it in a different way and of course, I'm referring to the South Suburban Airport site. And then we're going to have a little open discussion and some brainstorming and like I said, we'll wrap it up by eight o'clock. Some rules for engagement. I ask that everybody be respectful. There's no need to disparage other folks, other kinds of farming, anything like that. Let's all be as nice to each other as we can be. Let's keep focused on the future. I know we've got a lot of things that we're frustrated with that have happened in the past in this area, but let's focus on what we can do to change our future here in Will County. I want everyone to think big. We have incredible resources and incredible opportunities in this county and it's, things can only get as big as we allow them to, so I want us to think really big. And like I said, we're going to end on time. So, let me make some quick introductions. So, I am Tim Brennan. I'm Vice President of External Relations for Farm Foundation. I have been there for 10 years. I grew up on an organic farm in northeastern Ohio. My mother was one of the founders of Mother Earth News Magazine, if you've ever heard of that. I grew up in a very different world than the one that I work in. We had a goat dairy and all sorts of things. We were organic actually before there were organic standards, but my mother very much deeply believed in homesteading and going back to the land and growing your own food and fiber and everything else she could think of. I spent most of my career at the University of Chicago, I'd lived in Hyde Park and I kind of got burned out of it all and I said, "I really want to go back to the farm." After running from the farm as fast as I could and went to college, I realized I really loved being on a farm and so I sat down at a computer one day and I wrote "Farm Chicago." And the first farm that came up was this beautiful, if some of you may recognize that big yellow house across from Smokey Joe's in Crete, that's the farm that we bought 12 years ago. And it's only five acres, but you know, coming out of the city, five acres felt like a national park to me and I was happy to have it and we've restored that and we grow all sorts of things from hazelnuts and fruits and vegetables and we have a pond that we stocked and we're living a quality of life that I just wish everybody could. Being able to be this close to an amazing place like the city of Chicago, but be in a community as strong and caring and supportive as what we have here in eastern Will County, I just, I tell people all around the world how amazing this place is and how happy I am to live here. I am also part of an organization called Chicago Wilderness. Chicago Wilderness has been around for about 40 years. It is a conglomeration of just about every single conservation group from southern Wisconsin all the way to western Michigan. And the purpose of Chicago Wilderness is to build harmony between nature and humans in a variety of ways, to ensure that green spaces are protected, but also that water is protected and our natural resources are allowed to not only sort of sustain, but improve. And agriculture became part of their vision a couple of years ago and I'm going to be very honest with everybody, I went to that meeting and a lot of terrible things were said about farmers and I couldn't keep my big mouth shut. And next thing I know, I'm chairing the Agriculture Committee of Chicago Wilderness. And so, but that's okay. I'm proud to do it and I'm pleased with what we've done because the first thing I did is I got all those people on a bus last June and I brought them here to Will County. And I introduced them to five different kinds of farmers here in Will County and I cannot tell you how much that changed the dialogue. So much so, that Chicago Wilderness has now prioritized doing something about the South Suburban Airport site. Because I had an idea one day as I was driving by there and after talking to folks like Judy Ogala about that amazing farmland and to me, the tremendous loss it would be to put that underneath cement. We got thinking and came up with the idea of something which we'll talk about later, but Chicago Wilderness is an important organization in that its reach is deep and wide and people that are very committed to all aspects of conservation. So, I'm here tonight as part of Chicago Wilderness. Farm Foundation, on the other hand, was created in 1933. We're celebrating our 90th anniversary. It was founded here in Chicago by the CEO of International Harvester and Frank Loudon, who was the governor of Illinois and he was married to Florence Pullman, if you all know the Pullman Railcar Company. Well, they created an organization during the Depression, during the Dust Bowl, because they were really concerned that the federal government was about to mandate to American farmers how they should farm. And they said, "We can't let that happen." So, they wrote the first farm bill, they created the farm credit system, and they created Farm Foundation. We're a nonpartisan organization. We do not lobby, we do not advocate. Thanks to their wealth, we are financially independent. We do not rely on corporate dollars in order to exist. And what we do is we focus on solving some of the biggest problems in food and agriculture. And for us, that means lots of different things. We work on everything from farmer health, which to us is mental health, physical health and financial health, to soil health. We started the Soil Renaissance, we launched the Soil Health Institute five years ago. We work in trade, we're doing a lot right now with Europe, who's making a lot of interesting decisions about agriculture that's going to affect American farmers. We work wherever we're needed most and that's pretty exciting. We also just bought a farm in Libertyville. It's about 25 miles north of O'Hare. It's a heritage farm similar to the one that I live on and we're building an Innovation and Education Center there to help people better understand sustainability and regenerative agriculture. And when corporations in particular are talking about sustainability, they're talking about traceability, they're talking about farming techniques, most of them have never been on a farm. We recently had the executives from Quaker Oats come to the farm and we knew they were coming for a few months, so we planted a field of oats. Took them all out into that field of oats. You know, 90% of them had never been in an oat field before and they're making significant decisions about how farmers farm and what they want and they've never touched an oat plant before. So, we made them oat bread and we made them drink oat beer and we talked about oats for two days and they sat there and changed their strategy based on the conversation they had with us. And so, the power of bringing people into the fields and showing them not only the struggles of farming, but the amazing things that American farmers do and how they adapt, it is a remarkable story. So, Chicago Wilderness focuses on the 4.4 million acres of agricultural land that makes up that swath. That is a significant amount of land. And one thing I'm really proud of is when we came into this, they had set up an idea that we should have a certain amount of those acres in cover crops, we should have a certain amount of those acres doing water mitigation, things like that. When we dug into it, we found out that the farmers in this area were actually already doing that. The goals that they had set were already being done. Now, I got to tell you, if you're any farmers in the room, we still got to talk about cover crops. We don't have nearly enough cover crops in this county. And I know that's because we're growing a lot of corn and it's hard to put cover crops on corn, but you know, one thing we really want to see is more cover crops. But our goal is to work with farmers and you know, everybody working in production to improve the farming measurements in measurable and sustainable ecological improvements that increase diversity in food production for local consumption and improve the quality of life for rural communities. I have to really stress to you that local consumption. One thing that we really learned during COVID was that the farms in Chicago are not feeding the people of Chicago. Our farms feed the people, actually, our farms feed the animals that feed the people in the rest of the world. And that's okay. That created an economy, but that economy is in great danger. Because of climate change, over the next 40 years, we're not going to be able to grow the same things we're growing here today. Corn's going to be grown north of Saskatchewan, it's going to be grown in far southern Brazil and southern Argentina. It's just going to get hotter and hotter, it's going to be much harder to grow those things. Now, one advantage is, is we're in the Great Lakes region. We're not expecting our temperatures actually to get nearly as hot, but it gives us a lot of opportunities. As you all know, as we sit here on this warm November evening, the cold is getting shorter and the warm is getting longer. Well, that creates a lot of opportunities for us. We can grow different fruits and vegetables. We can grow a lot of things to feed the citizens of the Chicago land area, but unfortunately, we can't do that. And we can't do that because there's not a system to support that. The reason that commodity soy and corn work so well in county, in the state of Illinois, is we have an amazing infrastructure here in the state of Illinois. We have the rivers, we have the canals, we have the trucking systems, we have the seed companies, we have every single ingredient needed to produce the best corn and soy in the world. We are the number one corn producer in the United States, we are the number one soy producer in the United States. We also happen to be the number one pumpkin producer, if you didn't know that, something to be proud of. And horseradish, strangely enough. But I have to tell you, there's one farmer that does so much horseradish, that's why we're the number one horseradish state. But those commodity crops and the system that's created, we have to create other systems. If you want to grow apples in Will County, if you want to put in, you know, 10 acres of apples, unless you're selling directly to consumers, there is no place for you to sell those things. You know, unless you're creating your own system, and you're going to hear from a farmer here who has created his own system in order to be productive in a different way. Now, the corn and soy system works really well, but I tell you what, they're living on terrible margins and Judy Ogala, Judy, you're here somewhere. Judy is a wonderful farmer here in Will County. She lives on unbelievably small margins. We're literally talking 3% to 5% margins. Whereas, if you're growing specialty crops, you're growing things of high value crops, the margins are significantly better. That's what I want to see. I want to see the talented, smart people like Judy have more opportunities to grow more food and better, healthier food for all of us. Another thing that's changing is China doesn't really want to do business with the United States very much anymore. They have been slowly pulling all of their contracts with us, they, you know, they go in buying sprees every now and then, but they're not really willing to commit the way they were 10 years ago to buying significant amounts of American corn and soy. We are competing against Brazil. We're actually no longer the largest producer of commodity crops in the world, it's Brazil. Brazil is able to grow two crops a year, so if you imagine if Judy were to go out and plant soybeans in March, she could turn around in October and plant corn, she could double the productivity of her farm. Well, that's what they're doing in Brazil. Unfortunately, they've torn down rainforests in order to do that, but they are now the world producer of those things. And so, China is almost exclusively now only wanting to deal with Brazil. They're getting better prices, they have actually come in and built their own infrastructure in Brazil, they've built their own ports. In Africa, China has built a road from the top of Africa to the bottom of Africa because they believe that's one of, because of climate change, that's could be one of the next big growing areas. The reason China will never be a superpower is China can't feed itself. China relies on imports. It cannot produce enough food, they have degraded their land, a lot of their land is not suitable for agriculture. And so, food is power. You know, food is what makes America as strong as it is. You know, it may be, certainly don't want to disparage our military might, but it comes second to our power as food producers. And that's why it's so important that we expand the food that we grow and be able to feed ourselves. So, we're going to use a couple of terms today that I wanted to sort of clearly define for everybody. The first is sustainable agriculture. You hear a lot about sustainability. Sustainability is really important, it's been a catchword now for about 20 years and really sustainability simply means kind of pretty much just the status quo. Being able to do the same things, sustain your way of life, sustain the crops that you're growing on your farm in the way that you know how to do it. There are certainly, you know, you don't want to compromise your land, you know, a lot of folks inherit their land, they pass it on to their children, they want it to be as good as when they got it. Now, regenerative agriculture is a pretty new idea, but in lots of ways, it's an old idea. Regenerative farming is the way that if you had grandparents that farmed, they were regenerative farmers. Regenerative farming really means, how do I enhance what I have? How do I improve the soil? How do I improve the water? How do I diversify my farm? So, farms in the 1920s, 30s, 40s, 50s, you know, and certainly before that, were pretty diverse. You had livestock, you had everything from pigs and chickens and cows, both dairy and beef, as well as a variety of crops that not only fed the family, but fed the community. And so, what happens is you create a system, it's a closed loose system where those dairy cows that are out on the pasture, they're leaving manure, they're eating plants, they're chasing out bugs, they're leaving a lot of great nutrients behind. You come behind that and you plant in that, you have to use less fertilizer, less herbicides, less pesticides, and create a better and healthier system. And then if you're really good at it, you bring the chickens in after that and the chickens clean up after the cows and that is really what regenerative agriculture is. The struggle we have with regenerative agriculture, that it works brilliantly well on like a farm that I grew up in, we had 300 acres. That was a good system for 300 acres. Here in Illinois, the average farm now is well over 2,000 acres. Some of them are 5,000. There are 10,000 acre farms in the state of Illinois. We haven't figured out regenerative for a 10,000 acre farm yet. And we also, we don't have the infrastructure to support that. So, if I had 300 acres and I wanted to get, you know, 100 beef cattle and 200 chickens, there is nowhere for me, number one, to sell the products that I made, but also there's nowhere for me to process them. There is no butcher that is willing to take the cows out of my backfield and process those for me so that I can sell them. Doesn't exist in Will County. I can't say it doesn't exist. There are a couple of tiny operators that will do very small, that will do modest amounts, but not small amounts. And certainly not if the entire system changed. But there's also nowhere for me, if I'm growing, you know, I grow a variety of stuff on my farm and if I want to produce, you know, 200 jars of strawberry jam, there are no facilities for me to do that. I have to go through the Will County Health Board and get my kitchen certified, I have to invest a tremendous amount of money. But what if we had a place where people could actually do that? Brooklyn, Brooklyn, New York, one of the big things that they did is they took giant warehouses and made them processing facilities that are available to the people there who want to craft food. And it really made a revolution of food in Brooklyn, so imagine that. Last thing is green infrastructure. We're going to hear a little bit about that. And this is really about how to green the things that we do. So, green fuel, for example, how do we use hydrogen on farms? How do we use soybeans to make jet fuel? Really, how do we improve the things that we're doing and not just using synthetic methods or synthetic shortcuts, but using nature to benefit nature? So, let's talk about Will County agriculture and I'm just going to pull out a couple of things. One thing I want to tell you and I think it's the most important takeaway of this evening is, we have some of the finest farmland in America in this county, without exaggeration. We have some of the finest topsoil, we have some of the richest minerals. You all have lived here a long time, you probably know that the glacier that created Lake Michigan, it ended right here where we're sitting today, right here in Moni. And it dropped a lot of really great stuff as it dragged across and created that prairie and it's made for wonderful farmland. But it's also the second most endangered farmland in the United States. The American Farmland Trust published a study a couple of years ago and said, "Will County is in big trouble." Now, the only current data available by USDA is from 2017 and I will tell you, these numbers have changed significantly, but I will use these as they are the official published numbers. But just between 2017 and 2012, we lost 10% of our farms here in Will County. I would venture to say, I'm sure we've lost more than 10% since then. It's to warehouses, it is to solar farms, it is to a whole variety of reasons. Sometimes it's simply because there's nobody else to take over the farm. You know, the farmer has decided to retire or he's 80 years old and, or she doesn't want to do it anymore, doesn't have a child or grandchild that doesn't want to do it, their farm can sometimes be consolidated into a neighbor's farm, that's where we get these 5 and 10,000 acre farms, it's lots of family farms combined into one. 98% of the farms though, here in Will County are still family-owned farms. They're mom and pop organizations, they're families, multi-generational farms. I think that is a really wonderful thing. The market value of what we produce here in Will County in 2017 was $133 million in agricultural products out of Will County. That is extraordinary. And again, I would venture to say it's improved. I've seen the yields out of this county over the last few years and it's pretty incredible. No-till, so that's something some of you may not be familiar with. The concept of no-till is that we basically don't disturb the soil. So, a normal farm, and you see lots of them around here, farmers will go in with a plow and they'll plow and they want it to look beautiful and clean and spotless and we all admire their lovely fields, but that's kind of a really bad practice. What happens is these terrible winds here on the prairie blows their topsoil away, rainwater washes it away, it makes it very vulnerable. A lot of those wonderful minerals that the glacier left us disappear because of that. So, what we want farmers to do is leave something on the ground all the time. No-till is not popular in this county. This county is obsessed with beautiful, clean fields, which I understand, but I get those farmers to think a little bit differently about that. There are 92 different crops registered here in Will County, which is really surprising, but lots of those things are pretty small. There's a remarkable farmer over in Lockport and he has farmland that's been in his family for three generations and as you stand on his farm and you look around, all you see are housing developments all the way around him. And he said, "For the past five or six years, he's got people knocking on his door saying, 'My son has allergies and it's your fault, it's the chemicals that you're using, you're killing my family with your farm.'" And so, he was about ready to give up and he has a daughter that lives in Lake County and she said, "Well Dad, why don't you start a flower farm?" And he said, "When am I going to start a flower farm?" She said, "No, trust me, they make a lot of money." So, he said, "I'll give you an acre of land." So, right in front of their farm, wasn't his best land, it's probably some of his worst land, right against the road, he gave her an acre and they planted an acre of flowers. In that first year, they made $400,000 off of one acre of flowers. He immediately handed the keys to the farm over to his grandson, said, "I am now a flower farmer and you need to convert all of this to organic." And so, they're going through the process of converting that to an organic farm. So, part of that 92 is a lot of different things, including hemp, which you'll hear about in just a minute. See if I already talked about this, I'm going to. So, in terms of infrastructure, this is what we are most lacking here in Will County. And I'm going to turn this over to our two farmers here in a minute and they're going to each tell you how the lack of infrastructure has really impacted their ability to grow and to expand their businesses. And so, grain elevators and what we're talking about in terms of infrastructure, it's workers, it's seeds, it's inputs, it's railroad, it's trucking, it's processing facilities, all of those things that enable a farmer to be part of the economy. I'm going to skip through that and I'm going to call on our farmers to tell us a little bit about their story. Who wants to go first? Jesse or? All right, we'll have Jesse Smedberg. If you all know Tulip Tree Acres or Tulip Tree Farms over in Gardens, sorry, over in Beecher. Maybe you have been to one of their really wonderful events, but Jesse and his wife Rachel established that three years ago?
Five.
Is it five now? Oh my gosh, all right. Well, why don't you come tell us about it?
Hi, man, it's a full house. Thanks, Tim, for putting this together. I think this takes visionaries like you to go out of their way and court all of us to come together for a common cause and a common understanding. So, I think that's fantastic. Again, thank you to Moni and the Village of Moni and everybody here for letting us put this on. I think this is really, this is really great. Like Tim said, my name is Jesse Smedberg, I'm with Tulip Tree Gardens in Beecher. We are a vertically integrated wellness farm, we like to call ourselves. Sometimes we call ourselves the modern family farm. We produce a number of different products as well as crops. We mainly cash flow through industrial hemp, so we do a combination of CBD hemp, but this last year, we also got into industrial hemp for fiber with some really great and really promising success. So, there's definitely a lot of implications as it relates to the Midwest with regard to fiber. There's no doubt that fiber, industrial fiber is meant to be grown here in the Midwest. California farms, Oregon farms, Colorado farms are all flocking here. Trilogy and Seed just moved here just a number of years ago. There's a large exodus from California on the specialty crop side to get to a place where there's water, you know, we have roughly 39 inches of water that they crave. And so, there's a great interest on new crops and specialty crops coming in. And on the fiber side, as it relates to Will County, I think there's a great understanding that processing is very limited. You know, there's a lot of people that are interested, a lot of people don't want to deal with sending it to, I mean, I just sent, we just sent 322 bales to Dallas, Texas and that's a lot of trucking, right? You know, half the cost of the entire commodity ended up going into trucking. Still paid better than corn, but it was definitely a challenge. So, when we look at these types of trucks and this type of transportation and the amount of diesel that's spent for this crop to get moved down to Alabama or Dallas or wherever some of the larger processors are, it becomes cumbersome to farmers because farmers generally have grain trucks, they're willing, they have daycabs, they're willing to travel to the grain elevator, but they're not going to drive to Dallas with 17 loads of bales. So, that being said, what's really great about Chicagoland is that we have one of the greatest metropolitan intellectual assets in the world. You know, we have some of the greatest colleges, universities and for agriculture technology to, agriculture technology fits really well here. Like Tim touched on, we have the Riverway Water System, we have some of the greatest transportation in the world. We can move crops anywhere in the world from here cheaper than anybody else in the world anywhere else, thanks to the Mississippi. So, one of the interesting opportunities we have is this burgeoning tech sector in agriculture. This includes not only, not only organic approaches like my own, but also in conventional side. I think you're going to see a tremendous change on the conventional side with new gene-edited crops as opposed to gene-modified crops. I don't know if anybody's aware of the difference in those two, but GMO is an introduction of a foreign DNA or a synthetic DNA substance. Gene editing is actually editing a non-GMO and allowing it to remain non-GMO by simply literally editing the genetic code within the DNA of the plant. And this is what's going to give rise to five, six, seven corn stalks, this is what's going to give rise to knee-high corn. This is, this is what's going to really, I think, transform agriculture. So, if anybody's sitting there thinking that, hey, we've kind of peaked with GMOs, I don't think we've even seen the beginning of what is possible on the conventional side. So, what that does to the productivity and the future of the conventional side of agriculture around here, I think is very promising. On the organic side, like myself, we see great interest on the fiber and the grain for industrial hemp. Grain is coming in really well, there's definitely a lot of interest in it. The fiber, we need a strategic approach to the county, to the state, to the Midwest for processing. It was originally thought that processing was going to require $50 million facilities that were going to specialize in what's called decortication and that decortication would then feed the world. What we've learned over the last five years is that it's not the case really at all. We have given rise to niche markets, things like bioplastics. So, for instance, a bioplastic producer that's producing plastics from hemp doesn't need bales. They don't want bales, they don't want it baled a certain way. They want it silage chopped and they want it in big 80,000 pound silage containers and they're willing to take it all day and process all day, 24 hours. Decorticators, who's making products for denim and things like rope and things like that, have a very different niche requirement from the farmer. So, what we see is we see niche opportunities in the bioplastics to be allocated in areas where people are using large foraging harvesters, where people are able to get into large silage operations and able to actually, you know, produce a lot of biomass and move it, whereas on the textile side, you're going to see much more of a haystack approach with bales. That being said, we've got the next biggest issue, which is transportation. On the industrial hemp side, the largest cost to growing industrial hemp and getting it to market is not the land, it's not growing it, it's not baling it, it's literally paying the truck driver. And that is, that's something that we have to just really kind of understand and get our heads around on the hemp farming side in that, yes, there's money to be made on the crop, but in terms of the transportation and logistics side of things, there's a great deal of opportunity for the family farm because these bales need to move and there's not enough trucks to move them. We're turning down a 5,000 acre purchase order this year simply because of that reason, there is not enough trucks. So, one of the opportunities, I think, for a lot of farms that have trucking operations, grain operations, being able to put trucks on the road in August before they go on the road in September for beans and corn, we can add a month of road time to, easily a month of road time to your fleet. So, I think that's very promising. The investment that's needed is definitely going to be niche and sizable. We, I think if, I'm glad Judy's here, I think in terms of courting technological companies to the county and highlighting not only our access to transportation, which is the biggest asset here, for us at least, is important. And not just courting a general, a general industry approach to whether it's hemp or whether it's whatever, I think a very niche approach to isolating opportunities in bioplastics, isolating opportunities in advanced polymers and integrated fibers for the concrete industry. There's no secret that I think Ozenga is experimenting heavily and very quickly with hemp and there is a tremendous demand. We also, in the Midwest, are, we're privy to one of the largest automotive industries on the planet and we have access to the lakes and to the trains and the roadways in which to move fibers into the automotive industries. I believe it was Ford Motor that said they would need roughly 24 million. I believe it was Ford Motor that said they would need roughly 24 million acres to fill their existing projections. Obviously, that would, that would put a big dent into corn and soy, but also put such a dent into corn and soy that the price would drive and the third market, or the third rotation market would finally be open. Being able to facilitate getting it out of the field into Ford Motor's plants, that's, that's the challenge. And that's where, you know, drawing agriculture technology companies and really incentivizing these companies to come into Will County and understand that, hey, we have not just a couple of great resources, we have some incredible resources from transportation to intellectual power through the city, through our college system. We've had great success with interns from like Joliet Junior College and areas like that where there's people that are wildly interested in this. Long-term, again, property and land, and I understand situations where you're surrounded by homes and things like this, there's a, there's a important distinction, I think, between a traditional farming approach to land and valuing land and a long-term approach to an agroforestry, to an agroforestry implication. So let me kind of explain what I mean. In agroforestry, we're looking at, at, you know, payoff returns in terms of like seven to 10 years, right? And so, in a conventional agriculture or specialty crop situation, we wanna be able to turn profits right away. In agroforestry, we can't really do that. So therefore, we cut the trees down because there's no profit, right? Understandable. But with a, with an integrated approach, something that like Chicago Wilderness Alliance can, you know, facilitate, or there's a number of organizations that facilitate this. Through an integrated approach to agroforestry on particularly mitigated lands and mitigated ground and just, just, you know, bad ground, the returns are outrageous. And the problem with those returns of looking at, you know, $6,000 an acre returns for pawpaws and pomegranates, you know, it's a, it's a problem to get your head around it because of the operator structure. Again, another reason why I think the county and municipality areas can, can draw an investment from an operator structure where a farmer can say, yeah, we have chestnuts down on that south 20 acres that never grew anything and, well, so-and-so comes through once a year and they harvest them and then I get a check or I get a bucket of chestnuts, you know? There's, what we call on our farm is a lot of the littles. We haven't been privy to, you know, grandpa's combines and having a barn full of equipment. We're first-generation farmers. I sold everything I had and I, and I barely made it onto my ground. And so, the future of being able to, being able to integrate a comprehensive plan that's not only going to benefit one side of farming, but also look at, look at the long-term side, things like agroforestry, things like fiber. I know it takes vision, I know it takes time, and I know it, it takes a tremendous amount of vision, right? I look at, you know, things like Governor Otto Kerner created the forest preserve system, right? I mean, here's a guy that wanted to take this wildly valuable land that industrialists were begging to put down. And people like Jens Jensen convinced Governor Otto Kerner to say, no, we're gonna do the forest preserves. Why? Doesn't make any sense. Didn't make dollar sense, nothing. But the vision that they had created one of the most valuable assets in the entire country just by creating a little beltway of a few trees around the city of Chicago. No other city's done it. You know, you look at, you look at New York, you look at some of these other areas, nobody's ever been able to stop that urban sprawl, but the Forest Preserve District was able to do this. And I think it's, I think it's that type of vision and that type of long-term approach that requires us to say, hey, maybe we need something more than an airport. Maybe we need something more than concrete. We don't value what's under the ground, we don't value what's above the ground, we just value the ground. I think that valuation approach is, you know, maybe misguided. So, that being said, I don't think I have anything, anything much else.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Thanks, Tim. Thank you again, yeah.
Appreciate that. So, our next farmer is now third generation, sees bringing the fourth generation onto the farm, which is very important. They are conventional farmers who have converted part of their, part of their property now to organic farming and they're trying all kinds of different things. And I will also say Cory is part of our, we have a Young Farmer Accelerator Program at Farm Foundation and Cory is in our current class. So Cory Johnson.
Number one, thank you, Tim, obviously for the invite here. Thank you absolutely for the place for all this. Obviously, thank you everybody for coming out here to listen to what everybody kinda has to say about some of this. So, a little introduction. So again, my name's Cory Johnson. I grew up with a Moni address. My parents still live about two miles southeast of the golf course here in Green Garden. I actually live down in Piattone here now, but, you know, I got involved with my dad's, with our family's grain farm. My dad worked full-time, actually, my grandpa also worked full-time off the farm. And as my mom said, it was their hobby, growing up and doing things like that. And eventually, I, you know, being in high school, being involved in FFA, things like that, figured out that not only did I enjoy helping on the farm and obviously growing up and doing all that, but it was what I wanted to do. You know, the goal was, was full-time, obviously, hopefully for the rest of my life. I went to the University of Illinois, got a degree in crop sciences and eventually worked in the ag industry and the seed side of things, worked for a soil testing company for a few years. At about the same time, both my wife and I had the opportunity to move back up here and join our respective family businesses. And we've been working on all this. I still own a small ag soil testing company and, but am proud to say that, you know, over the last 10 years or so, gotten to the point where I'm a full-time farmer here in Will County. And so, a little bit about our operation. Actually, so the picture there is my daughter and she actually, if, hopefully if she's interested, she actually will be the sixth generation. So I'm actually the fifth generation here. Our family farm moved from eastern or western Pennsylvania and kinda continued here, as Tim kinda mentioned. So we have grown our operation quite a bit in those 10 years, obviously, since I decided that was the goal. And two years ago, we were able to take, to pick up some ground and take some other ground and now we have a little over 400 acres of certified organic land. On that ground, we currently still grow corn and soybeans, obviously certified organic. Starting next year, we will be adding in third or third, fourth, fifth crop rotations of alfalfa, cereal rye, oats, clover, and anything else that we can think of. And hopefully, you know, obviously add onto our operation, not only for some harvest, harvestability and things like that, but more so growing our own, basically growing our own fertilizer for the corn crops and things like that. In the organic side, you know, the first best fertilizer is obviously manure, chicken litter, things like that. Kinda as already has been alluded to here, we don't have really access to any of those things here in Will County, or at least in our, our general area. And so, you know, we're finding out other ways currently to do that, you know, to grow our fertility that probably will then, you know, work on to the conventional side, you know, and will, our conventional acres in the last two years already have changed because of things that we've been doing on the organic side. Of our operation, we personally use cover crops on about three-quarters of the operation and the other quarter, we're still trying to figure out. It's just a way to, you know, to work things into the system on that kinda thing. We no-till over half of our acres, including our organic soybeans. So for the most part, organics and no-till don't normally go together because obviously for the most part, tillage is the only way to, you know, for weed suppression and things like that. Part of the reason that we are growing cereal rye is for seed. We have, we just harvested it last, last week. We successfully grew 200 acres of organic no-till soybeans with doing nothing but planting a cereal rye cover crop basically a year ago and then crimping it down to create basically a weed mat. We have a special tool that we can then go back in and kinda re-crimp or chop up weeds that are in between rows. But we, with all the weather that we had, whether it was too dry or too wet or anything here over the past six or eight months, we grew organic soybeans that, you know, were within 10 bushel of our conventional yields here in our second year out. So, like I said, and, and it's quite a bit better than our first year, a year ago. So, you know, we've learned a lot, obviously, in the last two years doing this here. And obviously, we're going to continue to learn. And it's one of the big reasons why we got into the organic to begin with, is that it was a way for us to diversify with still being in the corn and soybean market. It's a whole different market, but we're still growing corn and soybeans. Obviously, we're going to continue to add to that rotation and, and things like that when we can, again, I'll get to in a second, but find markets and find reasons, you know, to be growing some of that. But overall, it's really kinda the diversification that everybody's kinda been talking about. Again, we're still growing corn and soybeans, but we're doing something a little bit different and obviously hopefully adding, you know, onto our operation there as well. So, to kinda get into a little bit more of the talk that we're, that we're talking about here, two of the biggest hurdles that a young operator, or any operator in general, but, you know, especially a young operator, trying to do this full-time, grow an operation, you know, support a family and things like that, is obviously number one is land availability. And so, that really feeds into a lot of what we're talking about here. Obviously, the farm rental market is pretty tough and, you know, for us, the cover crops, the organic side, it's a way for us to differentiate from the next guy who's gonna come in and, you know, say that they'll pay another $50 an acre for your land, something like that. Obviously, there's a lot more, there's a lot of talk on the organic side. A lot of landowners are very interested in that. A lot of landowners are interested in our, you know, minimal tillage, our no-till, the cover crops, you know, the regenerative agriculture, kinda what we've been talking about here. And we actually had some people from a couple groups through Farm Bureau come out to our farm here last year and gave some combine rides and a lot of, a lot of great questions on, on a lot of that. And, you know, kinda the thing that always was kinda brought up and what I seem to repeat, be repeating myself every round when somebody new was in the combine, is that we have found on our own operation that when you do things that are better for the environment, that are better for soil health, that are better for all that, not only are you helping the environment and soil health and all that, but it really seems to go hand-in-hand with helping our bottom line as well. You know, if we can treat the ground the right way, even through changes in weather, through things like that, you know, we can still produce crops and yields that continue to amaze us. So obviously, land availability is one of the things. And that kinda goes into all this where we don't need to be taking large swaths of land out of production of, you know, this, you know, pretty prime farmland like we've talked about here in this. And if we are gonna be taking some things out of production, I think we need to, again, kinda like what Jesse said, you know, have those kinda niche ideas on what we're gonna be doing. Development is not bad, change is not bad necessarily, as long as there's a, you know, an outcome or, or at least a vision on, on kinda what we're doing and all that. And kinda getting now down into the nitty-gritty, another real hurdle that we're in personally that I will talk about, kinda exactly what, you know, use for some of this land that Tim has kinda talked about and all that, is grain markets and end-user markets. Obviously, we've talked about end-user markets and, and things like that. So obviously, you guys drive around, I mean, every 10 miles, there's a, there's a conventional grain elevator that, that we can haul to and stuff like that. You know, all of our conventional crops, we go to the FS Grain Elevator right across from Walmart there in Bourbon A. That's where all the stuff's there. My dad's been working with them for 38 years or something like that. That's why we were able to still haul in the last two days when they were full. And when, when you've been working with them, obviously, for a long time, you know, you kinda develop those relationships. Our organic crops, on the other hand, all 420 acres of it, corn and soybeans, we hauled every single bushel, 109 miles to Goodfield, Illinois, which is located actually west of Bloomington. So you're talking about trucking, I understand. I don't, haven't gotten the bill yet, but it's not gonna be fun for all that. Between basically 10 days ago and in the beginning of this week, we had something like 36 semis, you know, out of the field to harvest those 400 acres. And not only does that take time, you know, that, that takes, you know, money from our, our side of things, we are using a lot of diesel fuel and, and, you know, a lot of infrastructure and, and things like that. And so, when Tim had talked about this, you know, the first thing that kinda came to mind on, on some of this was, and I'm not talking about just organic, but again, specialty crops, I mean, and all that. And Jesse hit on it again, too. You know, corn and soybeans, we have that marketplace. There really is a place in agriculture in this area or all over for a third, fourth, fifth, sixth crop. And when those markets can be realized, not only does that give opportunities to, whether it's well-established or younger operations, to kinda get into that, and like was mentioned, then that's not gonna hurt corn, regular corn and soybean prices either. You know, we, we have transportation issues, not here in the United States, but, you know, shipping outside of the United States. But, you know, we still seem to end up with, I don't even know what the carryout is on corn and soybeans every year, but, I mean, we can have a drought and there's still a carryout on, on stuff. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of positives to having a little bit more of a balanced marketplace, you know, and not just have all your eggs in one basket, you know, kinda thing there. Obviously, for this area, with all the farmland, everything that we've kinda mentioned, the farmland, the ability to get products away from this area and things like that, I mean, you know, in our mind, specialty markets, specialty marketplaces, specialty grain elevators, organic grain elevators, specialty meat process, or meat processing in general, you know, obviously, Will County used to be, not the epicenter, but I don't know how many dairy farms used to be in Will County and there's two now? I don't know. There's two that I know of. Maybe there's some up in Lockport or, you know, you know, north up over there, Bowling Brook and all that. But, you know, there's absolutely no reason why a lot of these markets that everybody uses and everybody that, you know, that we cannot, you know, be using a lot of this land, a lot of this area to be able to create these markets, support these markets. And at the same time, then support younger, newer operations and then be able to hopefully support the younger, the next generation of everybody who's coming through. I mean, my main goal, a main goal of mine in building this operation, obviously, I had a lot of help from my dad. My dad is, I think, very excited where we're at in the operation and all that. But if my daughter is interested in taking over, I would love for her to at least have an easier way in on some of this and then she can come up with her own ideas and then I'll be working for her and it'll be fine. So I can get to the point where I can just drive a tractor and do that kinda fun stuff. So again, there's just a lot of opportunity to bring on a lot of these, you know, smaller niche specialty markets. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. Farmland is often looked upon, particularly in the Chicagoland area, as land that's just waiting to be developed. It's the way we look at it in Crete. You know, I'm a planning and zoning officer, I'm, I'm proud- It's the way we look at it in Crete. You know, I'm a planning and zoning officer. I'm, I'm proud of the decisions we make, but they're hard decisions to make. And a lot of them are deciding what's going to happen to farmland. And one of the biggest pieces of farmland that's, that's up for discussion. Is the site of the South Suburban Airport. And it's currently, I think about 5,000 acres. This, this is kind of a fuzzy number. Somewhere between three to five to 7,000 acres. Um, but you see the, the yellow there, or maybe it's green up there. Uh, that's the land that has been purchased. Those yellow blocks that you see in there is land that, uh, have not yet been acquired, that they would like to acquire. And then the larger footprint is, uh, the ultimate size of the airport. So when I look at that land, I don't see that as land that's waiting to be developed. I see that as an incredible opportunity for this county. In 2021, uh, CMAP, which is the Chicago Metropolitan Area Planning Authority. Came up with a strategic plan for the Chicagoland area. And of the four pillars, one of the main pillars was food and agriculture. 65,000 people in the Chicagoland area are employed in the food and agricultural industry. It's only going to grow. Illinois is only going to become more and more important to the world when it comes to agriculture. Imagine if we were to take these 5,000 acres and make it into a regenerative agriculture center. That would focus on the future of food and agriculture for the entire world. On this site, we could have a local food shed, a food hub, processing facilities, as we've talked about, animal, vegetable, other foods. A marketplace for consumers, a place for experimental and research plots, a place for agritourism where people could come and ask questions. And talk directly to farmers about where their food is coming from, classroom space to teach, short-term worker housing. There are a lot of young people that want to go into farming today. That's one of the great myths out there. Everybody thinks that farmers are so old and there's no one to take over for them. The reality is, is people can't afford to take over for them. Do you know what a combine costs today? Almost a million dollars. That tractor that you see a farmer out there, he spent three, four, $500,000 for that tractor. Do you know what an average acre of farmland in Illinois is going for right now? Between 16 and $20,000 an acre. Do you know how many acres you have to have to make a living in the state of Illinois as a farmer? A minimum of 12,000 acres. How is a young person supposed to become a farmer? We can help them. And we can also help the underserved farmers. We have a lot of farmers of color who have been screwed in this area. By given terrible, been given terrible farmland and they're eking out a living just south of here. We can help them. We can help young people. We can help people that grew up in the city that want to farm. And we can help ourselves. We can build an incredible economy for this county. We can make this something that the world has never seen before. Cause we have 5,000 acres of the best farmland in the world that they want to put an airport on. What if we do something better? And that's all I wanted to say to you tonight. I don't want to talk about the airport. I can't imagine it's ever going to be built, but I think we can build this vision. I'm sure we can build this vision. There is so much talent. There is so much opportunity. The governor likes this idea. Our elected officials like this idea. He does. It's, it, he does. He does.
Taddy Corner from my property, 40 acres, prime farmland. I'm sorry. This is a great idea.
I don't know. I understand. Well, we're not going to talk about solar farms. We can. We're not going to talk about them. There's this, there's a law in Illinois that prevents villages and counties from making any of those decisions. So. Well, it's because the legislature sided in and so, but anyway, let's focus on, let's focus on this. So. I want to ask a couple of questions in our last few minutes. What else could be there? What else can we do in this area, uh, to make it, uh, to make this work? Absolutely.
I, I get the gentleman that shared. I appreciate that. But I am so totally confused. What exactly is it that you came to show us? That, that farm, that 5,000 acres has already been set aside by Pritzker.
Right.
And it's going to be an airport, whether we like it or not. Well, wait, let's just say for it, for, you know, for all intents and purposes, isn't it?
Right.
How exactly do you think that it can change?
Right.
From the bottom up to Pritzker?
The number one reason why that's still talked about as an airport site is that no one else has brought them a better idea. No one has brought a better idea. We want to take those 5,000 acres and build a regenerative agriculture center. That has processing facilities, that has farming facilities, that has research facilities, that focuses on the future of agriculture. Not trans, not, not an airport. The governor said he would welcome an alternative idea. So what we want to come out, what we want to start doing beginning tonight is to build an alternative plan for that site. Where we would encompass all of these ideas about what that land could be. Karen?
Um, are you getting universities involved?
Yeah, University of Illinois is very interested in it. Yep, absolutely. I haven't talked to them yet. They're aware of it, but I have not talked to them yet. Economic development. Sure.
Yeah, I mean, uh, sign me up. I'm ready. I've been trying to figure something out. I know Judy, uh, she's been fighting it for 30 years. On the county board, there's a lot of people that want to fight this. And, and I know a lot of people have been fighting it for a long time. And the only ones that are okay about the airport are the ones that figure if they can sell their houses for a little more money, they'll sell and find somewhere else to live where there's no airport.
Absolutely. Maria?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I share a lot of stuff with you. I'm a farmer and a footprint for generations. I just moved here six years ago. On my property, I did not know that this was a thing. It's not on the year after, clearly. But what I want to just put some framework around is that in the summer, Governor Pritzker signed some legislation that says effective January 1st, 20.4. There's a six-month window upon private, private funders. So the deal's not done. The idea that Tim and others are trying to put forward, we need to come together as a community and say, we want a better plan. We don't want the airport because it's not the only choice. We can come up with a better strategy. We can come up and pool all of our energy, all of our intelligence, all of our resources, our experience. I know many of you that are farmers. And our generations of farmers. I know some of you are homeschoolers. I'm starting to move on. I'm a homeschooler. And there are so many families that are hungry to be a part of this. We talk about on Facebook how we don't have a grocery store in Moni. It is a food desert. Let that sink in, iron it. Five thousand acres of prime farmland and we are a food desert. When are we going to get a, a grocery store in Moni? We have a grocery store. We just need to come together and pull our resources together. We grow wonderful, beautiful crops. I deliver them to some of your homes. I bring you eggs, you know, I, I take five hours. I put their eggs in the, in the freezer chest, you know, that you leave there out in front of your house. This is the type of work that I do, that Jane, um, who's a fellow homeschooler in here in the room, this family does. They have eight children. They're on five acres. They're on the footprint. So there's a lot of great people here. They have a lot of great energy. We want to good, put good food and bring our food together. I see others in the room who are doing this. And so that's what the idea is about tonight. Let's come together. Let's pool our energy and let's put forward a plan and say, you know, we as people have spoken, Governor Pritzker, we want. And are delivering you an alternative plan. And that's what this is about. So I just want to say that briefly.
Has he actually said, I mean, really to this, well, first, this is good?
Absolutely.
Cause I've not read that.
Absolutely.
Where has he said that?
He has said it to several people. Also Governor Pritzker invested a million of his own personal dollars into a food digester in the city of Chicago. That's producing methane and two types of organic fertilizer. They want to bring that fertilizer to Will County. This site would be the place where we could create a distribution center for that. You know, there are a lot of opportunities and a lot of connections. Now, we only have a couple of minutes left. There was one other question over here.
I just want to say something.
Sure.
Look at this South Suburban website about the airport. The state has spent $97 million on, on land. And that, that, that land could have been on taxpayer rolls and funding schools, funding different things for, for the community. And that land is not collecting any taxes. And one of the sellers of that land is Loyola University. You talk about schools having an impact and making your alliance and everything. Now, there's a school that had a chance right there, right under their nose. They had the land. And he sold the state to build an airport. Would you comment on that?
I don't know anything about it. Sorry. They, they're not an ag school anyway, so I'm, I'm not surprised. Judy, did you have something to say?
I did. So I don't know all of you, but I did know a lot of you. We started representing Will County, Eastern Will County, Monique, Crete. He was on YouTube back in 2012 as county board member. I'm currently now the chair of the county board. And I've been working with Tim and others, the, the lawyer and others to get us to this point. It's taken me a long time to get there. I've put in a lot of hours. I try and play all the craziness of people who I've seen that were in, in, uh, Philly of today fighting for a project. We're working on doing that. But this is one thing we can do. And I talked with a guy named Doug Pryor, who's currently the president of the Will County Center for African American. And what I'd like to do, if you've seen this here, is have Tim come and give a presentation there, work that out because they need to see what we can do. Because one thing COVID taught us is that we need local, sustainable food. And we have land here. We have the energy here. I've done Corey Simpson, he was a little kid. Now we've got a little kid. It's amazing. And we have the people here. We have the land here. We have great soil here. We have the energy. So we will be working to do that, to bring that forward. But I'm glad that all of you showed up because we can't do without you. We need everybody to join us. So thank you, Tim, for the great presentation.
Sure. So next step. So if you've signed in, please make sure you sign up. And I'm going to put you on a mailing list so that we can communicate regularly with you. Um, we still need, we're going to need some funding. And that's the next thing to build this, this, we're going to have to do a study and we're going to have to put a plan together. And so we're searching for funding. So if anybody's aware of foundations or anybody else that would fund this kind of community-oriented project, we do need to find some funding. Talk to your neighbors about this. We're going to have another meeting, I think, probably in early February. We'll tell you sort of the progress that we've made and where things are at and kind of figuring out the path, uh, forward to July. As, as was mentioned, July is the deadline, uh, for the current legislation. And, uh, I think that's about it. It's eight. So I'm going to call the meeting and I'll be happy to talk to you, anybody that has questions afterwards. So thank you all very much.